Anybody now for a please take a roll?
Pastor Vino?
Yes.
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 Please stand and join me in the prayer of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands the foundation of God, invisible with the reading of justice for all.
Wonderful acknowledgement of Eagle Scouts I take to Troop Seven.
Thank you, Council President. I was contacted by constituent, and it was notified that so fine gentlemen in our city attained the rank of Eagle within the Boy Scouts. And there are a select few, only two percent of those that originally joined the Scouts attained that rank. And they have to go through a process of achieving 21 badges, do work within the community, prove such things as honor and leadership. And so it's my pleasure to be able to present citations to the young men that obtained the rank of Eagle Scout here at Cranston. I believe it's Troop Seven?
Six.
Oh, Troop Six. And so I guess I'll come around and just keep calling your names before I come up. I'll give you your citation.
Well, he didn't assign, as a former member of Troop Six, former Eagle Scout myself, and all the hard work goes into obtaining that level. You guys did a great job, we're very proud of you. The more Eagle Scouts we have, the more honor, bravery, loyalty, and issue we can prove in this city. So thank you for working hard and taking the high strength and trust. I'd like to apologize to my casuals that ate that time. I worked in Boston, I had time to go home, geez, so I apologize. So I'd like to call Raymond Bowden.
Alphonse Cardy.
Joseph Poole.
Colin Salder.
Christian Vincent.
Council President, on the citation, there was an error. So we're gonna have to move it straight out and we'll get to the Scouts. It did say Troop Seven, I think it should have been Troop Six, so I apologize.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Fox. On behalf of the City Council, I want to thank you gentlemen. You're an inspiration, you have families, and you do a job well. Anybody now, a vote of care, if anybody from the public would like to speak on any document title. Please step forward, give your name and address. Try to limit your four minutes.
My name is David, I'm just here with the Trust of Roger France. I'd like to speak on the trash. I've been here since two thousand and six, and the rats actually became overwhelming. The conversion to the automated trash collection system has pretty much eliminated almost all of the rats. The discussion to go back to trash bags, even if they're stuck in more trash bags, is a very poor idea. It circumvents a whole purpose that we went for this automated system of raptor bins and specialized collection. To go back to a trash bag thrown on the curb, just to bring the rats back in perfect time and for the summer. I had the purchase of bin, an extra bin, at a hundred and fifty dollars a year for the occasional extra trash I have. It's two dollars and eight cents a week. And it's the same collection bin that they use to put food on the dump. I don't see any purpose in going backwards. Thank you.
Anybody else in the public that would like to speak on any document title? Please come forward, give your name and address on the record.
Colonel Lynch, very far, middle of drive, Cranston, Colorado. I'm sure you, Mr. President, I'm gonna be a little bit longer than four minutes. I'm sure you have a very long course. Good evening, Council President, men and distinguished members of the City Council. Most of you know me personally, but for the mill members, many ask questions. I am a former member of the Cranston Police Department, a Cranston resident, and a husband of a dedicated educator in our school system. Tonight, I present myself to speak on behalf of the appointment of Robert Cork to the rank of Police Major. First, I'd like to thank Colonel Winkles for the superior selection of such a distinguished officer, for both the police department and the community alike. Leadership decisions in law enforcement are not just about the police department's insurance needs, rather it's equally important to consider the community. This is why it's fair, it's important for us all to support Robert Cork on his vital courtship. Robert Cork is a main group role just a few short blocks away from City Hall and attended the very same high school behind him. He has led the latest accomplishments in all his endeavors. A longtime Cranston resident, a Cranston East student, an athlete, husband, father, youth coach, and mentor to many police officers like myself. My first night as a Cranston police officer, I found myself in the passing machine of Officer Cork's cruiser, being mentored by Bob. I quickly gained his love of the city and the police department from our gauzy gastic conversations. It was early in my career that I learned so much about Bob, who Bob really was. I learned his passion for policing and his deep dedication to public service. He projected such confidence in his teachings and demeanor and one could never forget his unmistakable professional image. Notably, I have never seen Bob Cork with a rankle in his uniform and unshod shirt, or as we all know, not even a hair out of place. We used to say to the Finns, that he was like Sam Malone from Cheers. He is the picture-erest police officer, an image of what a police officer should represent and the benchmark for other offices to emulate. As our careers continued to grow, I once again found myself in the passing machine of Bob's cruiser. It was my first night as a patrol sergeant that I had the fortune of being mentored by Bob, who was the veteran sergeant on the late ship. His willingness to provide me with the land station of the ship and the tools needed to be a successful first-line supervisor were greatly needed and appreciated. Fast forward a couple of years, I was promoted to the rank of Lieutenant, shortly after Bob and his mentoring continued. It was Bob that I was believing on my first night at the helm of the patrol division. Once again, it was his guidance and tools to help pave yet another chapter in my tenure of public service. As I became a captain and later Lieutenant Colonel, it was Bob's approval that I saw engage my own success in both the department and my personal endeavors. Robert Cork is a person that manly has value, both his intellect and compassion. I could always count on Bob to commit an unvaried truth, and it was ultimately his endorsement that I saw in many of my actions as an executive officer. He is currently the most senior member of the Pop for twenty-nine impressive years of service, and that is no easy feat with the recent issues plaguing his department. Unfortunately, with the actions of our current city administration, our community hasn't been put first in matters pertaining to the police department. The citizens of the city are an important piece of this puzzle, and that might run into seemingly unfortunate excuses. Fortunately, we can begin to rebuild the broken force with a plan of action that incorporates Robert Cork. I acquit Bob to being like the Navy ship during the calm, he is constant with preparing for a successful future with a methodical approach that embraces everything, and I might add with some humor, always professional, but with some humor. During the storm, which served the men in the department with Tom and Bob in being a steady hand, looking at their horizons and navigating fault with them being compassion and vision. It is these traits that have led to his many personal and professional successes. In speaking about after major Cork in his life, it brings me to the old adage when generation Xers would speak about a person that is calm, compassionate, loyal, and determined. The term best known for this is an old-fashioned steady hand, a true beacon of accountability. During my tenure, I took the platform of Colonel Grass Vision to provide the troops of the department a stable leadership team with the addition of a third executive officer. His mindset was the mayor of men professional agencies that bifurcated the management of the department into both operations and administration, which provided an insular layer of executive leadership needed to enhance its successful service. Tonight, we have an opportunity as a city to complete a triangle of professional leadership at the police department with the selection of Major Cork. This appointment will give Colonel Winkles two highly competent majors serving as his wingman, or hopefully in the future, women executive officers. Together, they will deliver a leadership platform that will allow all, and I mean all, the officers to strive and to continue the Cranston Police Department legacy of excellence, which is a hallmark of all local police. To the City Council, I ask that you make the right and just decision and put a mentor leading in a manner of excellence in the position he was dear, Robert Cork, to help regrow our community and police department to continue promise. Acting Major Cork, I will offer you this advice that a mutual friend of ours named me when I served as his executive officer. Make every decision that you are faced with with full thought and care. Be certain to ask yourself if this right be just. Ask yourself this, if your actions were published on the top fold of the problems journal, would your decision make us all proud? These are the words that Colonel Grass instilled upon me, and I think our friends' words will both dwell on you and the department in the future. Colonel Michael Winkles. While your attendance was low at the coffee with the chief hours, please note that your vision and leadership is the talk of every coffee shop in this city. Mike, trust me, the community is grateful for your service. Your command staff, and most importantly, our officers, have long revered you with your guidance and direction of this department. Thank you for your service, and consider yourself fortunate to have Major Todd Padalano and Robert Cork guiding your legacy as our new police chief. Lastly, may God bless the city of Cranston and all of the members of the Cranston Police Department who have acted and retired, and provide them all the safety and tools necessary to build a safe and prosperous community. Thank you.
Anybody else in the public that would like to speak on any document title? Same now, Harry now, that goes on the public hearing section.
Are there any resolutions?
No resolutions? Our report committees, Public Works Committee, Councilman Seale.
I, yes, Council President. Ordinance ten dash fourteen dash zero eight amendment of Title VIII, code of City of Cranston for thousand five hundred garbage. This item came up in front of the regular scheduled Public Works meeting with unanimous recognition.
Motion to approve, there's second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Councilman Pecchio.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to make a friendly amendment to add language, probably after the last one, it was to subject to appropriation by the City Council, so that we have a funding mechanism for it. We'll just open it as a friendly amendment.
Second. Any discussion?
Yeah, Councilman Seale. I'd rather say administration.
Yeah, I thought you said the mayor and him.
I mean, whatever is proper, I think it's the budget's approved by both of them.
Councilman Seale.
I would support it.
Pass for it.
No, I'm sorry.
I would support it if the administration could say the funding mechanism would begin to come up. I'm not sure that that's accurate. Unless we ratify the budget, we can amend the budget. So if the administration doesn't pass the budget by itself, it would be quite, you could say both. But I don't think you can leave off the council because if you don't appropriate the money, it doesn't get there.
Councilman Freya.
Oh, Councilman Akel. Thank you for having me, double.
I can't support this amendment because I think it's just, we want it too much under council when the mayor proposed the budget, it's his budget. We do ratify, but I think in all fairness, it should be given to the administration. If council is effective, does not want to choose that award, then it should be the mayor and the council. But, you remember, it should be.
I have no problem with administration and the council, but that's fine. You have to agree with the council. So I'll withdraw my prior amendment and just clarify. I'll move to amend it to include the language saying subject to appropriation by both the administration and the City Council.
Second. Okay, motion to amend, second. Again, Councilman, I'm in the discussion, Councilman Seale.
So through the chair, the Councilman Pecchio, or the mayor, in his new budget, does it put a line item for that one?
Well, we could amend it. We could amend, and we passed the funding budget. So I don't really see a big problem.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Harry now, please take a roll.
Councilman Freya.
Yes.
Councilman Seales.
Yes.
Councilman Voss.
Yes.
Councilman Freya.
Yes.
Councilman Sia.
Yes.
Councilman Voss.
Yes.
Councilman Aron Pecchio.
Yes.
Councilman Sari.
Yes.
Yes. Now we go on to budgets, I mean, the ordinance settlement. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, there's a second.
Motion to amend, second. Any discussion on the motion? Anybody now, please take a roll.
Councilman Freya.
Yes.
Councilman Seales.
No.
Councilman Voss.
Yes.
Councilman Freya.
Yes.
Councilman Sia.
Yes.
Yes. Councilman Aron Pecchio.
Yes.
Councilman Sari.
Yes.
Councilman Freya.
Yes. Moving now to the Finance Committee, Chief Seales.
Okay, first item is an ordinance ratifying the memorandum of understanding between the city and the police union to do with, that's the memorandum agreement that was negotiated in connection with the promotion of Captain Padalano to major. Motion to approve.
Second. Motion to amend, approve, there's a second. Any discussion on the motion? Harry now, Councilman Fox.
Thank you, Council President. During the committee meeting, I wasn't able to comment because I was distracted by citations that need to be signed. I don't, I'm gonna vote no on this as I voted in no committee because, and I explained this to Major Padalano, it has nothing to do with him, him being major, or any of that. But to me, I feel like it's a setting precedent that whenever someone's promoted, that we can carve out something special. And I understand the circumstances, and I can see both sides of the board on this. And I just wanted to explain myself because I know some people think sometimes, oh, no, just as a contrarian. But I do feel as though that this does possibly set things in the future that if someone else wanted to become major, or any other promotions within any of the departments or the city, they could try to get something put in. Well, if this happens, and I wish, in this circumstance, that the circumstances surrounding why this is occurring didn't occur. But I still, I feel as though, if we're going for the future, that I will vote no on this. And again, I wish Major Padalano well at the time of the department. I think he's gonna be a great major. And again, this has nothing to do with anything like that. I just feel as though precedent has been set, thank you.
Any other discussion? Councilman Seales.
Yes, I'm gonna vote yes on this, although I have many of the same concerns that Councilman Fox has. But as I've looked at, considered voting no, but as I've looked at it, I think that we've gotta look at the most important issue, which is that we've gotta get over this and we've gotta get the police department set. And I think with this and the next item on the agenda, the appointment of Robert Cork, that we'll do that. There obviously was a big mess made, it wasn't made by the council. It was made by the former police chief and the mayor, with help from some other people. And we just need to, we need to kind of, this is an imperfect agreement, but I think we have to go with it and get the police department back on track.
Majority Leader Akel.
Thank you, President. I'm gonna concur with Councilman Seales, I disagree with Councilman Fox. I don't think we're creating any special, I think we're trying to fix a wrong. And I think for over a year and a half, individuals that we've supported by IA were put through scrutiny, and this is always safeguard positions. Majors are no longer in the union, and we need to move forward, let people be at peace, do their job at work, and I think this is a safe go. And this improved the Cranston Police Department, it's the right thing to do. And I concur with Councilman Seales. The chief of safety officers, the mayor, and the abuses and the poor leadership there fall on there. Thank you.
Councilman Pecchio.
Thank you, Council President. I would have had a concern, except that there is a specific language in this agreement which says that it definitely shall not constitute a past practice or precedent with regard to be comparable or analogous claims of grievances. So I think there's sufficient language in there to make me comfortable with it. It could certainly move forward when it does.
Any other discussion? Councilman Fox.
Through the chair, Solicitor Kirsten Ball, does anything in this language prevent, so I don't wanna use a hypothetical on that. Maybe this will change my look, but let's say ten years down the road, Major Cork retires and someone else wants to become major. Is there anything in this language that prevents them from trying to seek a similar ordinance in MOU that they could try in that same sort of agreement, or they don't?
Well, I think the question is, could anyone try? The answer is yes. First, the premise of the question is, hey, you're Cork, he's not subject to this MOU. It's only Padalano. So this is.
This is Padalano, again, Padalano.
Yeah, so this is unique to him, and pursuant to the ordinance that we just discussed, terminates with him automatically. So any new discussions of an agreement like this would have to be going forward again through the council.
And trying to get this agreement, can they use this past agreement as some sort of leverage or any kind of precedent setting? I don't know, it's a, well, this major got this, would he use it or not, or is this something that?
I think if you stay around there long enough, you'll see something for everything.
Yeah. Okay. Just be around there.
Councilman Seales, you?
You made a comment that we were told about numerous clients that this is a name-specific agreement. His name's old. So there's no possible right, I'm not a attorney, that anyone else not named Padalano could use that as a precedent. It says his name is old, and we asked that of Councilman Fox. So I hope that makes.
Can I respond? I don't wanna keep going back and forth. Can I respond, also?
I understand that this particular agreement ends with Major Padalano. I understand that. But my point is that now you're setting, now this is in there, it goes away once Major Padalano retires. But the next guy that comes along can try to get a similar deal. And I was curious if this could be used as some sort of precedent setting thing. And then we look back and say, oh, well, he got this, can I get this as well? And that's my own concern. And I, again, I understand this is a special circumstance, I understand the issues surrounding it. But I'm looking into the future and hoping that, again, Colonel Winkles is doing a great job. And none of the stuff that happened previously occurs in the future. But again, that's my own concern. Thank you.
Councilman Freya.
You hear we talk Padalano? There's no second guy named Todd Padalano, the show part, oh, my. This is good for me, too, because I'm also Todd Padalano.
Any other discussion? Harry now, please take a roll.
Pastor Vino.
Yes.
Pastor Seales.
Yes.
Councilman Voss.
No.
Councilman Aron Pecchio.
Yes.
Councilman Sia.
Yes.
Councilman Voss.
Yes.
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 The next item that has been sent to the council by the Finance Committee is the appointment of Captain Robert Cork as major of the Cranston Police Department.
Motion to approve, again. Motion made, second. Any discussion? Councilman Pecchio.
Thank you, Council President. I couldn't, I didn't speak before because I wasn't voting in any committee. But I will support Captain Cork, now soon to be Major Cork. I think anyone who stays around for twenty-nine years certainly has earned his right to serve in this position. So I will support this.
Councilman Seales and Councilman Voss.
Thank you, Council President. I'm very happy to have you on board as a major. I think this goes a long way to my colleagues and attorney, the page, which I think we need to do and move on and deal. I think this goes a long way towards doing that, so I hope I support it. Captain soon to be Major Cork.
Councilman Voss. Thank you, Council President. Just wanna say congratulations, well deserved. And anybody who's been to the tent, she deserves a Medal of Honor as well. So congratulations, thank you.
Councilman Freya.
Thank you, Council President. I said it's an hour ago, I'll say again. You know, it just goes to show you that part of our determination in being a great police officer do pay off. I think you are an example, an exemplar for all members of the Cranston Police Department. Stand up to it. Congratulations for voting yes on this, and I wish you many ways of success in leading the department with Major Padalano.
Councilman Fox.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you again for your twenty-nine years of your service in the city. I'll definitely be voting in favor of this. And I hope you're not golfing, you've been here for a long, long time as major. And I think you're doing a great job recently, so.
Any other discussion? I'll make one quick comment. I think the citizens of the city are extremely lucky. Now we have Major Cork, the Major Padalano, the second in their ranks. They both have the institutional knowledge, they respect it, and I think they're both outstanding individuals. Hearing that, you now take a vote on Major Cork. Please take a roll.
Yes.
Pastor Seales.
Yes.
Councilman Voss.
Yes.
Councilman Aron Pecchio.
Yes.
Councilman Sia.
Yes.
Councilman Voss.
Yes.
Councilman Aron Pecchio.
Yes.
Councilman Sari.
Yes.
Yes.
Now the next item, please take a roll.
Yes.
Passa Naval, Navidio?
Yes.
Passa Caplaskis?
Yes.
Before we continue, do you need a gentleman to say a few words?
Major Padalano, just fill some rank on it. Yeah, I'd just like to thank every one of the council people for this opportunity. Colonel Quest, Major Padalano, everyone who spoke on my behalf today, and all my friends and fellow workers. Thank you.
The next item is the item that we approved in committee to do with the captain first class position. Now, that's not on the agenda, did we need to do anything special with this? It is on the agenda?
Yes, it is at the top of the.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, I got the paper book there. All right. So we had motion to approve, we had a second, second.
Any discussion? Here we are, where we stand.
Passa Prina?
Yes.
Passa Cyclos?
Yes.
Passa Blas?
No.
Passa Draga Kell?
Yes.
Passa Silla?
Yes.
Passa Kaplaskis?
Yes.
Passa Naval, Navidio?
Yes.
Passa Caplaskis?
Yes.
The next item is motor vehicle tax payments. That is recommended by the tax assessor.
Motion to approve, second. Any discussion? Here we are, where we stand.
Passa Prina?
Yes.
Passa Cyclos?
Yes.
Passa Blas?
No.
Passa Draga Kell?
Yes.
Passa Silla?
Yes.
Passa Kaplaskis?
Yes.
Passa Naval, Navidio?
Yes.
Passa Caplaskis?
Yes.
The next item is waivers of tax interest that are recommended by the city treasurer.
Motion to approve, second. Any discussion? Here we are, where we stand.
Passa Prina?
Yes.
Passa Cyclos?
Yes.
Passa Blas?
No.
Passa Draga Kell?
Yes.
Passa Silla?
Yes.
Passa Kaplaskis?
Yes.
Passa Naval, Navidio?
Yes.
Passa Caplaskis?
Yes.
And then the last item is denials of requests for interest waivers. The denials are recommended by the city treasurer.
Motion to approve, second. Motion made, second. Any discussion? Here we are, where we stand.
Passa Prina?
Yes.
Passa Cyclos?
Yes.
Passa Blas?
No.
Passa Draga Kell?
Yes.
Passa Silla?
Yes.
Passa Kaplaskis?
Yes.
Passa Naval, Navidio?
Yes.
Passa Caplaskis?
Yes. My ordinance committee, majority leader, Damian Akala.
Thank you, President Lee. I'm at this time, here over the place, Chair of Councilmen Cyclos.
Okay, we have ordinance 21501, which has to do with a zone change for Crown Holdings at Chapelview Project. This is recommended by the ordinance committee.
Motion approved, second. Motion made, second. Any discussion? Councilman Green?
Thank you, Council President. In the committee meeting, I should have made this change when I was reading through all the exhibits, but I think I was down from the giant paper that encompasses these things, because there's, you know, a hundred pages of those. The one confusion I had was because this parcel has three lanes of state roads and one lane of city roads, who would be the governor of Florida when it came to traffic updates? So the one thing I want to do is, and I'm looking at the zone change before us, and the exhibit before us doesn't make mention as to who's responsible. Exhibit C is very vague as to who basically oversees all the traffic components of it. So I wanted to make an amendment to this, any ordinance on line 37, to basically state that parcel will comply, all traffic improvements on a parcel will basically comply with the rules and regulations set by our IDO.
Amendment, here we are. Amendment to the ordinance has been made, it's a second. Any discussion on the amendment? Councilman Cyclos?
Uh, having from the demonstration about the amendment? Questioned, Councilman Green asked about the traffic.
Mr. President, to be honest with you, I don't have a, I mean, I'd have to talk to our traffic engineer to see if he has a different opinion on that. That issue hasn't been bringing this to us in fact, so unfortunately I can't speak to it right now.
Okay. Mr. Colonel, do you have an opinion on it?
I'd have to move directly, after seeking opinion on the traffic. It makes sense logically, but I just don't know, because he's in traffic, except that I don't like to read.
If you're proposing it to the president, to the sponsor, you're proposing it?
And so basically, the parcel sits, actually very by parcel the way it sits, there are three state roads that come across the property, and one significant traffic improvement site, it's all in the jurisdiction of the route of transportation of the postal city. I think the DOT has a good ability to know what needs to be done when it comes to traffic, so that one will actually follow when it comes to traffic. Of course, fixing lights and sidewalks.
Wouldn't the state control the state roads and the city control the city road?
Usually there's one source for traffic improvements.
Councilman Favecchio? Thank you, Council President. Perhaps through the chair, I could ask the representative from Crown Holdings, because I think they have a lot of experience in this matter, because I think you're right, Councilman Cyclos, speaking. The state controls all roads, I don't think you can stop tearing up a state road or a pool. But perhaps Mr. Coats or one of his experts?
I believe all traffic improvements are actually on state roads.
Yeah.
Look like they're ending out on state roads.
Mr. Chairman, I believe with the entirety of that project, even when they upgraded car stats, as Chapelview was built down, any improvements made to Sokanasa crossings, everything was with wide out approval already. So that's not really doing anything under the continuing precedent of having the state, you know, taking care of those roads and going to engineering proxies and things. So it's the same thing, maybe, I believe there's some sort of, correct if I'm wrong, state managed funds or something, and any improvements that may also, so that's why they would be the IDO person of the city and surprise.
Any suggestions, Mr. Coats? His interpretation of this?
Mr. Chairman, Rydott has a process whereby it's called physical operation permit that requires a curb cut on this project. Power Road is a state road. It's a very unique situation. There's no small streets in Cranston that are state roads. That will require physical operation permit. So I do think that Councilman Barina's suggestion is very acceptable to us. Rydott worked with the city of Cranston very closely in our original physical operation permits, and all the obligations we've made since then. And there's a process for them to incorporate city comments into that process. So I think, as the council has explained it, that certainly makes sense to our team, and we're certainly minimal to that. As this council knows, we are going to have to make changes to Route 2, which is a state roadway, and only the physical operation permit would govern there. Anything that impacts the intersection of Sokanasa and Route 2, they govern down a portion of that. And of course, anything on Power Road, they govern. So I am subject to a physical operation permit process, and so we're fine with that. I think it does streamline it and make the process go forward. And we're happy to work with this council in the future. We'll be back for this council to discuss traffic improvements as an assessment on other issues that we already have been in the council. Mr. Chairman, we have the AP here, they're walking through the AP process. They were here in case the council had any questions on traffic. We also have our legal counsel here and also our comp plan expert, just in case the whole council had any questions. So we're happy to answer any questions.
James Cyclos? Again, one question. If I remember correctly, at the committee level, there was an estimate that this project would increase tax revenues by $700,000?
Yes, $740,000.
But there were no specifics on what exactly was going to be built there yet? And so my question was, my question is, how do you know how much tax revenue it's going to generate if you don't know what's going to be built there?
Because I would give a conservative estimate to this council, and the chairman I would say the last time I tested on taxes on Sokanasa, on what was then called Sokanasa Crossings Park, I think many of you were observing the project, some of you were counsel, I don't think any of you were within 98, but.
Counselor.
Counselor, right here, yes. And so if you recall, we made, we made an estimate there for million one basic service and we passed two million two long ago. And so I made a conservative estimate testing, Mr. Chairman, and I'm confident, Mr. President, that if we pass that number like this, we hope to make a substantial development here that will have taxes far in excess of the conservative number that I estimate.
Now we have to put on the amendment to the ordinance.
Through the chair? The planning director at the committee, at the committee meeting and also I believe the legal counsel advocate, did reference one amendment that the council should consider, which was with regard to the conditions set out in the ordinance, that they were set out in the narrative report. On line 29, C5 with conditions. The conditions are outlined in the narrative report dated January, I think it's 22nd, January 22nd, 2015. It was suggested that that be included.
Motion made, second. Any other discussion? Where we stand, you all.
Councilman Green?
Yes.
Passa Cyclos?
No.
Passa Blas?
Yes.
Passa Draga Kell?
Yes.
Passa Silla?
Yes.
Passa Kaplaskis?
Yes.
Passa Naval, Navidio?
Yes.
Passa Caplaskis?
Yes.
Passa Naval, Navidio?
Yes.
Passa Caplaskis?
Yes.
Passa Naval, Navidio?
Yes.
Passa Caplaskis?
Yes.
Now we're going on the ordinance amendment. Any other discussion?
Just a question to the clerk. So you're, you're saying on line 29, it should say C5 with conditions as outlined by the planning commission?
I believe the applicant's attorney, it's president, she may be standing at the committee earlier. It was, if you read the planning commission's recommendation, it lead, it says the controlling document with zone change is entitled, "The Files of Chapelview Planning and Development." The document sets up the conditions by which the site may be developed.
Mr. President, I may address the thing that, uh, there was a specific narrative, in the address from my name is Tom Moses on the constable's Crown Holdings, this matter, since going on law for most of the time. There was a specific narrative, this specific language regarding this that was attached, that was specifically put with the ordinance somewhere along the line that was dropped. I just want to make a clarification that it's back for the, provides a renewed chart, which has spent substantial amount of time with the planning commission and with Mr. Wapola to resolve a lot of standard issues, and so it should be included in the ordinance. And I have to be accurate, we do not have a.
If memory serves, during the committee process, we had the ordinance in the entirety of the narrative, not just exhibit A. I don't know if that's the scribble there, I'm not including any link.
No, the ordinance was drafted as it was submitted by, as we received it in our office. The only exhibit it was referenced was exhibit A, which was the mixed events.
Well, to the point of the attorney, I remember Mr. Wapola telling us that there were things we could do, we couldn't do, we asked a lot of questions on what zones to negotiate in and what zones to negotiate out, and if those aren't going to be a part of this, then we're just changing it to C5, and the condition was not going to be attached.
Yes, that's exactly what happened, Council. You would have C5, as you said with, but there were no conditions, so there aren't conditions, so you have C5. This is actually the city's benefit, that's why it was very important that's included.
The reference here would then make it part of the ordinance, so it would be recorded in line 3, that's a part of the ordinance, yes.
So what do we say, is it a D and C, or what do we do to make sure we reference?
Yes.
Ah, sorry. Mr. Green, you can lay your camera. I, I consulted with our attorney. Yes. He suggests, I can do this. It suggests that the ordinance be amended at line 29, where it begins by saying C5, and it currently says C5 with conditions we would add, set out as exhibit B. And that's the document Mr. Wapola just gave us, which the clerk has not yet. In the form of a motion. Okay, it's been in the form of a motion. There's a second and discussion. Councilman Favecchio and Councilman Silla?
We have a copy of that.
Councilman Silla, while Councilman Favecchio is reading, do you want to make any?
I was just going to ask, just as we called there off, what I solicitor spoke about?
Yes, that's.
Well, I understand that, but is there a limit to Homicide second insurance, any appointment?
Oh, term limits.
Term, I'm sorry, yes.
Like us, you mean?
Like us, yes.
I don't think so.
So is that, we don't have terms?
Not for these positions, I think the court said the zoning board, the city council, and the mayor, depending on whether it's a two-year or a four-year term.
It's open.
It's open.
The vote cap positions do not, I'm not certain if you guard the, the canvassers, because that would be in the state statute.
So, may I ask a question? May I ask another question?
Oh, please, all right.
So if we didn't vote on any of these members being served for month-to-month, is that correct? And the only reason I would ask you that is because of some votes that were taken, it certainly matters that perhaps we get three days to think about it, so that we can, you know, maybe come up with all the members.
Well, the only one that you can think about are Mr. Tomlinson and, uh...
So if we weren't taking that on, because Mr. Dwyer is my opponent, that's not a horrible thing. Okay, so on the other two, if we were to not vote on it, it would just serve from month to month, is that correct?
They would serve from month to month, until you decide you want to vote on it, or until they say, says, "I'm not giving you money, goodbye."
They don't give you money, do they?
No, they don't. Why? In the, just for the confidence, if you don't have enough confidence in me, don't vote for us.
Through the chair?
I have confidence in you, Counsel, President.
Thank you.
Through the chair, the chair does set provisions when the term expires on the board member, they have a period, if they're not reappointed, they can serve for 90 days, be, at the expiration of 90 days, they do not, no longer be, they could no longer act on the board.
Counselor, the chairman.
Yeah, Counsel, President, we should look into, see if we can get a council appointment, a council person, either liaison or non-boarded member, so that voting record doesn't happen again, if it did, not be caught without the party of hands now.
Well, I think, I think you can appoint a council member to the board of contract and purchases, I think, former president Garrett Reidy was a member of that, and he's on the council.
Just something for us to think about, I think, after, not my counsel box is concerned, it's always my, being voting on something that's already been voted on.
Counsel, cabinet, Counsel, question?
Give a signal, attorney.
I would say that counsel could not serve on the board of contract and purchase because of sufficient power issues. The board of contract and purchases is not there to make decisions in lieu of anything else but to make sure that the bidding process is done fairly, that the bids are opened completely, that the procedure was followed. They don't make evaluative decisions or express a philosophical preference over how a certain department should spend money or not. That is the money that you give that particular department to go and do things with. The board of contract and purchase is simply executes the will of the department, soliciting bids that are fair and complete.
Counselor Sinore, Counselor Lucio, Counselor Faria?
And I do agree with the host solicitor, however, we could have liaison or non-boarded member of the city on that board, no, no voting power.
Well, the administration has Mr. Strong on that board, Mr. Mason on that board, and, uh, who else? How about the rest of you guys? Who else besides yourself? I know two, there are two Republicans, three Democrats, and Homicide, and Mr. Strong, yes? Just to, you can't make me?
Just to, just to reiterate, just, 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 they need to public, by the way, I was in charge for the board of contract and purchase, and all of these, they are public meetings, and anyone can attend. So if there's a habit of liaison, anyone can attend these meetings, or vote the letters of bids.
Counsel, the seat of debate.
I believe there was Councilman McFarlane who passed a word and stating council people off contract and purchasing, because in 1998, 1999, 2000, 2001, I served as a council member there. I also have an ethics opinion, because I served on the zoning board, since if the council president so deemed that he needed to put private citizen who happened to be councilman on contract and purchasing, he could do that, because you voted contract and purchasing, you don't vote against anything in the council.
The question is not, and that one of ethics, or instead of question, is wrong separation of powers, and that gives you legislative branch, influence over administrative decision-making. The question over whether or not this council can appoint people to boards and commissions, has always been interesting one to me, I don't know, you know, the state legislature does not do that anymore, so I don't know if that applies here, but I think that that stretches the appropriate authority to make the decision on how the money is given.
So, so...
Counsel, Lucio?
I'm sorry, Counsel, President.
It's a record, it's a record.
So, how does the board of contract and purchasing operate? Do they operate under the charter, or do they operate by orders?
The board of contract and purchase operates under the charter.
Okay, and then in the rules and regulations, govern that, by orders, correct?
Yes, and by charter.
Counsel, Plin?
Thank you, Counsel, President. So the only thing I have to ask is, it's not really a question, it's more a statement, so no need to reply, but realistically, you know, you made a statement that means that vote cap is open bid, it makes sure that bids are done, that bids are acceptable, they follow the rules. From my recollection, every time someone got involved about this trash contract, it came back to vote cap negotiated trash contract, vote cap negotiated trash contract. So if it is true that they only open bids, it means no one negotiated the trash contract, so somebody had to.
I think the statement that vote cap negotiates anything is false.
So then that would mean that it fall a fee of may have negotiated trash contract, I believe, or maybe someone in his administration.
I don't think anyone, I don't think anyone is saying that exactly the way you're not negotiating trash contract. I think what we're saying is that the bids were properly submitted through vote cap, and these were the bids that were received. I think that's the distinction, when you put out a bid for services, you get a server mile of service back.
Then I would like to apologize to your attorney strong for, for voting on vote cap earlier.
And you select, you select the ones that meet your needs.
Apparently it was administration negotiated trash contract. Funny how things sometimes come out that way.
I don't think, I don't, you know, right, it's, uh...
Counsel, Lucio?
Counsel, President, I agree with what you said, however, before you quit that trash proposal, up bid, let's call it proposal instead of contract, is usually an expert of some source that gives advice to the city, asks you how to put that together, what you're looking for, and the fees, and sometimes what happens is, the person who helps also one way or another, I think happens to bid, and if the record is wrong, so, yeah, so...
Funny how that all works.
Yeah, so, that's a follow-up.
Any other discussion on this?
Please.
I think it's pretty evident that the board of contract and purchases, open up the contracts, give a low price, and my only question is, is there a recommendation from the administration on which contract is the most acceptable?
In, in general?
In general.
Okay. In, in general, it depends on what type of bid it is, if it's for a particular item with a widget, then it would be a low price situation. If it were an evaluative bid, then it would go back to the department head to evaluate which particular bid, or create a, for example, or create a particular committee of people to evaluate the bids.
Okay, well, let's be more specific, the waste contract that was presented for the board of contract and purchases, was there a recommendation from the administration to accept waste management?
I don't think, I think that...
Maybe Mr. Strong should be selected, he was on that committee.
I just want to say this, that the board of contract and purchase accepts bids, they don't accept contracts.
I'm asking if there was a recommendation, Mr. Strong?
It's my understanding, the bids were open, it went to an evaluation committee.
They have them for?
I believe it was a public works director, a purchasing director, and one of the general, I'm not sure.
All right.
So it wasn't the administration?
The directors worked for the administration?
Oh, yes.
Oh, okay.
So, what's it?
All I'm saying is, they did an evaluative bid, then it came back to vote cap to a vote.
All right, so there was a recommendation from the evaluation committee to vote cap, and they accepted the bid.
Unfortunately, Counsel, in bids open, many times they go to the department that the board contains to, for their review and recognition, the purchasing agent passes it on to vote cap.
And in, in all fairness, as part of the proper procedure, because it wouldn't be fair to have three people who know nothing about widgets, determining which bid to take. Maybe there should be some kind of recommendation, so I'm glad the administration recommended to vote cap that we accept the waste management bid, because that tells us enough for why we have to blend this. Thank you. Moving on, where are we, by the way?
Mark Dwyer, question in the office.
Oh.
Mark Dwyer, okay.
There's a motion in second. No more discussion at all, thank you. Please, clerk, please take the floor.
Yes.
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 Yes. Colleen Fliddell? As a member of the board of contract and purchases.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion made in second, any discussion? There are none, clerk, please take the floor.
Yes.
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 Yes. Colleen Fliddell? As a member of the board of contract and purchases.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion made in second, any discussion? There are none, clerk, please take the floor.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Richard Tomlinson?
Motion to approve?
Motion made in second, any discussion? There are none, clerk, please take the floor.
Yes.
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 No.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
No. Yes. Moving on, the board of campuses, senior monthly board, citing properties in the city that have ever gotten bad, handled from administration by the governor, being discussed through the council. There are none, move on. Are there any other city offices, reports with the administration? Second communication, according to hiring specialty consultant, consultants, etc., pursuant to charter, charter section 1505, any report from the administration?
Uh, Counsel, brother, it's just off the mind, when we brought that up, that I have a report today, we did hire the planning committee.
And sometimes what happens is the person who helps also winging another, I hate that incident, because the right is on the wrong, and so, you know, so, it's funny how that don't work, but yeah, so, that's a thought.
Any other discussion on this? I think it's pretty evident that the Board of Contract and Purchases, open up the contracts, see what a low price there is, and my only question is, is there a recommendation from the administration on which contract was the most acceptable?
In, in general?
In general.
Okay. In, in general, it depends on what type of bid it is. If it's for a particular item, like a widget, then it would be a low price situation. If it were an evaluated bid, then it would go back to the department head to evaluate which particular bid or create a, for example, or create a particular committee of people to evaluate the bids.
Okay, well, well, let's be more specific. The waste contract that was presented for the Board of Contract and Purchases, was there a recommendation from the administration to accept waste management?
I don't think, I think that.
Maybe Mr. Strong should be selected, because he was on that committee.
I just want to say this, that the Board of Contract and Purchase accepts bids. They don't accept contracts.
I'm asking if there was a recommendation. Mr. Strong?
It's my understanding that the bids were open. It went to an evaluation committee.
May I have a quote?
I believe it was a public director, a purchasing director, and one of the general, I'm not sure.
Right.
It wasn't the administration.
Oh, the directors work for the administration?
Oh, yes.
Oh, okay.
So, what's?
All I'm saying is they did an evaluated bid, then it came back to BOCAP to a low bid.
All right, so there was a recommendation from the evaluation committee to BOCAP, and they accepted it, why?
And usually, Councilman, bids are open, many times they go to the department that the board is going to take to, for their review of the purchasing agent who passes on the BOCAP.
All right, and in all fairness, as part of the procedure, because it wouldn't be fair to have three people who know nothing about widgets, determine which bid to take. Maybe there should be some kind of recommendation, so I'm glad the administration recommended to BOCAP that we accept the waste management bid. Because that tells us enough for a while, we have to blend this. Thank you. Moving on, where are we, by the way?
Not provided. Let's hear them all.
Oh.
Not provided.
Not provided, okay. There's a motion and a second. No more discussion, I hope, thank you. Please, please take your role.
Yes.
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 Yes. Colleen Foodell is a member of the Board of Contract and Purchases.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Very nice, please take your role.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
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 Yes. Richard Tomlinson.
Motion to approve.
Motion made, is there a second? On second, there's discussion.
Uh, I want to make a sweat.
Under discussion, any discussion, anybody want to speak out? There are no discussions, please take your role.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
No. Yes. Moving on, the Board of Canvases, reappointment, Edmund J. Roy, still in the board, who's currently the chairman.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Very nice, please take your role.
Yes.
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 Yes. Report of city offices, standing looking for what are citing properties in the city that we've ever gotten back, handling the administration, what we've gone through. There'll be discussion for the council. Very nice, move on. Are there any other city offices reports with the administration, executive communications, reporting on hiring specialty consultant consultants itself, assumed in charter, charter section fifteen oh five? Any report from the administration?
During, uh, Council Brother, it just got denied, um, when we brought that up, because I got the report today, uh, we did hire the claims committee, Al Robinson Smith, Larry Smith, to evaluate certain claims relating to a lot of these challenges, it's customary rate, I don't know what that is, but, he will be attending the executive session, the claims committee, by the way, I think it's on the sixth, at six P M, to go over his report, his physical findings, and his engineering opinion. Thank you.
The administration, uh, gave a request from Captain Kenneth Rulo.
Mr. President, Captain Kenneth Rulo, France Department, having a change his fifty-fifth birthday, has made a request to be continued in service for one year. He has submitted the required paperwork to demonstrate that he is eligible for reinstatement and recommend that it be approved.
Motion to approve.
Say it again.
Motion made and seconded, any discussions? Councilman Akka.
Thank you, President. I have a, I have a, go through school with Kenny, he was tough and feisty then, as a teenager, Jimmy still fifty-five was tough and feisty, good luck there, Ken.
Any other discussion? Everybody up there shocked and realized they're fifty-five, and they're thinking about fifty-five. Congratulations. Please take your role.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, yes.
Uh, yes.
Uh, okay, yes. Congratulations.
President, teenager sixty-five years old, requesting to be continued in service for one year, has submitted paperwork to demonstrate approval and has suggested council.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Very nice, please take your role.
Yes.
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 Conservation Commission, the Washington Center, Dolores de Mayo Carroll is a member currently pending June twenty-fifth, two thousand seventeen. Is there a motion, both still clear?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Very nice, please take your role.
I have a, one for Councilman Seo. On the agenda, it says unexpired terms of the marriage of Fontaine, what's that? Is he currently serving that capacity?
Administration, if you need to that question.
Mr. Fontaine, if I may, Mr. Fontaine has resigned. Um, Mr. Carroll will fill the remainder of his term.
Do we have a letter of resignation?
Uh, yes, we do.
Is he a party appointment, or is that just a? A point?
It's present.
It's present, I believe that's the mayor's appointment, the mayor's appointment, sorry, thank you. Okay, any other discussion? Very nice, please take your role.
Councilman.
Yes.
Council Stairos?
Yes.
Council Barakas?
Yes.
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 Council Aposis?
Yes.
Council Araguiro?
Yes.
Council Pastassemia?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, claims under this list, ask for auto body, Kathleen Malone, three thousand seven hundred eight thousand twenty-two cents, vehicle damage, and Amay Wu, two thousand nine hundred eighty dollars, pretty much, vehicle damage, interaction event. Council further communications. Well, the suppressive votes are going except for prison error, I would be sure of it. On behalf of the great city council, I wish Mayor Fontaine, uh, sincerely, happiness on his new engagement, and wishing the very, very best in his upcoming marriage. That's it, move on. Councilmember communications, Councilman Stairos.
Uh, two things, one, uh, that's not on here, the, I sent everyone a budget schedule, and that's been changed a little bit, so, uh, because the mayor, uh, is giving his budget address later, and we have to get a certain number of days' notice before we have our first budget here, so that pushed things forward. There are a lot of changes, but, you know, just be aware there's some changes. Uh, the second thing is, that I know that Director Strong always likes it if there's questions in advance, uh, because then he can answer them quickly. I can think of two that almost always come up, that maybe you could be prepared with. Uh, one is differentials, and the second is the, how can the development money is spent, or has been spent last year, most recent year? Those are two things. So if you have any questions, you can get them to, to Bob. And, uh, is there anything else on the budget we need to, now, the meetings are going to start at six-thirty? And I think that's, and the first one, the first, where are you doing this, Dave?
The first, um, will be on the Wednesday, which will be, um, April eighth, and I'll send that, the budget schedule tomorrow to the council members.
Okay, so the first one is the one where there's the.
The public area.
The change. So that, we had one, I think, scheduled for April second or third, and it gets up back to the eighth.
Uh, yes, and then we took, as I recall, the one that was scheduled, originally scheduled for Thursday, the ninth, and moved that order to the following week, so we wouldn't have two meetings back to back, and we made it the Monday, the thirteenth.
All right.
Or the Tuesday, I'm not sure.
But, did you, did you want to say, well? I just asked the mayor if she had a new schedule, that's all, because the schedule I still have is the one that we originally formed, he originally formulated. So I just wanted to know what the changes were. Okay. Uh, and then I just, you know, I have this use of the tax letter to promote recycling on the agenda to our administration, uh, to take advantage of that opportunity when the tax letter goes up.
Thank you, Councilmen Stairos, before we continue, I'd like to announce the recent appointment of Sarah Lee Cads, former councilwoman, as a member of the board committee. Motion, Councilman Senator Maria, you're next, I'm interested.
Hey, Councilman, is this just an appointment, past, or a councilwoman?
Okay, thank you.
Paul, you dropped it again.
Please, just point of information.
Thank you, Council President. Uh, staffs at the power box, uh, as we know, the power box, the traffic light, one who had the back order, uh, I believe that it's in, uh, because I guess it's positive information. Do you share that with us, please? I'm sorry, Director.
On behalf of, uh, the president, yes, our traffic engineer, Stephen Malkehi, received an update from the R I D O T dated Friday, March twentieth. Good morning, Steve, just want to let you know that the new traffic signals in Abbott and Flintville are up and running, inhabited Walnut Grove should be put on flash mode next week, I'll keep you updated on progress. So it looks like it is, uh, a little bit sooner than we expected.
Uh, Councilman, I have a couple of moments, uh, that, on record, please. Uh, the street sweepers, now that, I'm hoping this is the last bit of snow again, do we have it scheduled on both of the street sweepers, when it's not, you know, they're going to be rather dizzy? And I'm not hoping to be too busy tonight, because I noticed it's up.
Uh, Mr. President, pending any bad weather, the plan right now is to start sweeping on equal sets, and subject to the weather.
Now, will they start? They usually go west or east, east to west, depending on.
They alternate west to east and east to west, I believe this year is west to east.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't correct it, apparently it's east to west.
Can I just?
Yes.
Raise a question on the street sweeping? That, uh, if the, the hills next to Stillhouse Cove, if they could be done.
They always start with those hills.
Okay, and, and they are going to start on the east side this year?
Uh, I'm going to verify that, I'm not.
Even, even if they start on the west side?
They will start with the hills at Stillhouse Cove, even if they're starting on the west more than rest of the city. I have had that discussion with Director Mason.
Great, thank you very much.
Also, my annual request, when can we put in our requests for streets to be paved, localized on the paving list, uh, for November, this will be here. How else might be able to shed some?
Last year was Boy Three's turn, right? They were off the list this year. They were off the list this year. Every year, if you were a forest.
I believe that, directly from our colleagues, we give you a list, and it's looked at by the administration, and then we pick the streets, or the administration picks. So we can follow this, uh, method that we've done in recent years?
Yes, uh, finance director, Strong, I've been talking about this, and, uh, we're going to follow the same procedure as we did last year, we'll take the wish list, and we'll take a look at it, with the updated reports from engineers, and then we'll look to see how much funding is available, and as always, we try to divide it as fairly and evenly as possible, um, and then take into account different sorts of, uh, of factors that we want to take.
And one more, Council President, uh, I guess it's the Director's question, um, we asked, uh, I think the Council President asked that we get a list of, uh, the Lomond and Brick, the bus shelters, a list of building projects and site permits that were, or were not taken out.
Don't we have any bus stop orders? Did we get three?
It's a work in progress, Councilman, we are working on it, but I'm not able to wait for it, so I just get your answer.
Okay, um, do you want to sign next month's docket, Council President?
Do you have a question, do you want to mention about the docket?
I have a key on the docket, I'll not let this one go, as you can tell. Thank you.
Councilman Pavekio. Thank you, Council President, a couple of things to follow up on both, Councilman Senator Maria and Councilman Stairos. First, for Councilman Stairos, I had an idea, um, I was listening, I had to call Walworth City Hall, and they had an announcement on a book of weeks pickup, before they could get into the message to City Hall, when they tell you to call another number. So I was wondering if we could, I don't know if the mayor does up to it, but we can post, not have any message when you call it to City Hall recommending recycling, uh, because it costs money, it saves taxpayer dollars, maybe a brief message, ten second message at the beginning of the call, uh, would be good, because I know, I think the Walworth message is a little too long, for, you know, before you try to get into the department to request, but we could do a very quick message, I think that might help, and it won't cost anything. And as far as, because it's about to the streets, I don't know, is there any way we can have our grant, I can start looking into whether there's going to be any money available, I know it's out, which is unusual that there's so many, but, uh, I think it's really going to be a problem for us.
Councilman Senator Maria.
I will, uh, Council President, to your permission, I'll talk to, uh, Mr. Blosson and see if there's any grant money available for that question.
Yes, please do. Councilman Marry, you may direct up.
Thank you, Council President, all politics aside, just like to say that, perhaps I may have fun, I listen to that, I wish him all peace and happiness that marriage can bring. Uh, he's just one less bachelor in the city of Cranston, probably the last bulldog here in the city, so all these single young ladies out there, and. Point of course of privilege.
Is there any, Council?
Who wants to follow that, Councilman?
Nobody.
I did the meeting.
I introduce, there's no open business, see, the introduction, who is this?
The proposal is three dash fifteen dash oh one, and then the ten five on the code of city of Cranston, entitled to business licenses and regulations for massage body works license, to be referred to safety services for hearing on April sixth. Proposed ordinance three dash fifteen dash oh two, title ten, chapter thirty-two of the code of the city of Cranston, intended to motor vehicles and traffic, lengthy row of one-way traffic between certain hours, to be referred to the ordinance committee for hearing on April sixteen. Proposed ordinance three dash fifteen dash oh three, the amendment title twelve of the code of the city of Cranston, entitled street sidewalks and public places sidewalk reconstruction cost share program, to be referred to public works committee for hearing on April sixth. Proposed ordinance three dash fifteen dash oh four, amendment title two, chapter twenty-four of the code of the city of Cranston, entitled connection of firearms to municipal systems, to be referred to the finance committee for hearing on April sixteen. We have two petitions from National Grid for pole pitches on the dash control, and on Roberts Avenue, to be referred to public works committee for hearing on April sixth. We have quite a few claims being introduced this evening.
Yes.
I will read every one, but all.
A fool man, why? Did you have to read every one, Council?
Uh, it's necessary. It's been a couple of years, we know it, so why don't you just? A fool man's a liar.
We're fine with this, Bob, we have, there are, most of them are property damage claims, there are two personal injuries at the end of the list, these will be referred to the claims committee for hearing on, on April sixth. That's all I have.
Is there a motion, if you're all mad as a river, the same way? Oh, motion made second, I get, uh, any discussion here or not, but please take your role.
Yes.
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 Uh, yes.
Yes, uh, next council meeting will be Monday, February twenty-seventh. Is there a motion to adjourn? So.
Second. Roll in favor.